Call this meeting to order and opening session prayer will be nineteen eighties, with allegiance with Dr. Diane Sadler.
Bless, pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just want to thank you for this day, Lord, thank you for everything you've given us. Lord be with us tonight as we make the best decisions for our children, our employees of this school system, Father. Lord be with everyone that's been sick and struggling with this awful disease that's hit our country, this world, Father, just put your healing hand upon them and give guidance to their leaders, Father, to make the right decisions for our country. Lord be with all of our troops that are fighting for this great country here at home and overseas. For Christ and we pray. Amen.
Okay, I need a motion to-
Hold on, hold on, Coach, hold on, Coach. Prayer, uh, please.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Coach, can I ask you, hold on just a second, I've got, we gotta get a battery for our recorder.
Just let me know when you're ready. Uh, I need motion, motion to approve the minutes of the June eighteen to twenty twenty board meeting.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Any of these additions or deletions to proposed agenda? Okay. Uh, number five, approve of the July fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting agenda. I, I need a motion.
I make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, Dr. Winham has a, a statement to read the first thing tonight. Dr. Winham?
Thank you, Coach. On Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, during the course of investigating a complaint involving special education services, administrators at Livingston Academy received information regarding allegations of inappropriate conduct regarding Mark Lee. Based on the statements of the student to school administrators, an investigation was launched on that same day regarding the allegations. Three students whose names had been mentioned were interviewed. On Monday, March the second, twenty twenty, the parents of one of the students interviewed met with school administrators who were informed of interim measures the school system had taken. They were assured that the investigation was ongoing. On Monday, March the second, twenty twenty, a meeting was held with the school superintendent, Mr. Lee, and school administrators where the allegations were discussed. On Wednesday, March the fourth, twenty twenty, a meeting was held with Mr. Lee, his T E A representative, and school administration. At that meeting, Mr. Lee was informed of his suspension of three days for allegations of inappropriate conduct. Moreover, the matter would receive continued attention should other allegations come to the attention of the school system. Soon thereafter, the district attorney general undertook an investigation of the matter, and Mr. Lee was placed on suspension without pay pending the completion of that investigation. The school system's inquiries into this matter were ongoing, however, some delay occurred due to the closing of schools and the school system's central office because of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Upon completing his investigation, the district attorney general determined that no charges would be pursued against Mr. Lee. However, during this time of suspension, the school system received three complaints regarding inappropriate statements made by, made by Mr. Lee. Two of the statements involved allegations of statements which were made between thirteen and seventeen years ago. Another statement received involved allegations of statements that were made three to four years ago. Based on the receipt of these statements and the content of allegations, it has been determined that Mr. Lee will be suspended without pay as a teacher with the Olentown County Board of Education for a period of ninety days. This suspension will be reported to the State Board of Education for possible licensure action. And he will be removed as a teacher at Livingston Academy effective immediately and subject to assignment within the school system by the director of schools. He will be placed on professional probation effective immediately, and records of all these administrative actions will be placed in his public personnel file. Thank you, Coach Milton.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Rudd had asked to speak to the board, uh, you have five minutes, so, uh, go ahead, please.
Good evening, board members and the community. My name is Carolyn Rudd. My daughter is Elizabeth Anne Rudd. Elizabeth was sexually harassed repeatedly by Livingston Academy schoolteacher Mark Lee. In an effort to protect the future students from sexual harassment by this teacher, Elizabeth Anne chose to tell her heartbreaking story on social media a couple of weeks ago. Elizabeth Anne is not the first student to be sexually harassed by Mr. Lee. There is a past documentation of this same behavior by him against other female students. Past documentation, Mark Lee's behavior should have been prevented. Should have prevented my child from enduring this. As a concerned parent, I am here tonight to ask you what is being done to prevent this from happening to future students. And I ask you, why did this happen to my child? And I beg you, as a mother, to please do the right thing and remove him from the school board and the school system and make our children safe. Please, I beg you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rudd. Dr. Winham now will, uh, go through the consent of the school employees of Olentown County.
Hey, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So with the ninety day suspension, what happens in that interim? So you said right now he's suspended ninety days?
He was suspended ninety days.
He was? So when's that up?
It is, that ninety days is completed.
So it's completed now?
Yes, sir.
Some of you still a teacher at Livingston Academy? No?
That suspension without pay, that is correct.
Okay, executive action items, number one, consider identifying all school employees of Olentown County Schools as essential workers. Number two, approve heat and cooling bid for three rooftop units for eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars at Allen's Elementary. Approve the following bid for one forty-one ViewSonic at seven fifty each, a total of one hundred five thousand seven hundred and fifty. One hundred and forty-one Logitech webcams at eighty-nine dollars each, a total of twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-nine. And one hundred and forty-one wireless display adapters at forty-two dollars each, a total of five thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars from CDW. Number four, approve the following bid for one forty-one stands at one hundred and six dollars each, a total of fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty-six. One forty-one, one hundred and forty-one U S B C H D M I adapters at eighteen dollars each, a total of two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. One hundred and forty-one Surface Docs at one hundred and sixty-eight dollars each, for a total of twenty-three thousand six eighty-eight. One hundred and forty-one capture cards at thirty-one ninety-nine each, a total of four thousand five hundred and ten dollars fifty-nine cents. Approve the following bid from Tierney for one hundred and fifty-one, or excuse me, one hundred and forty-one Surface Pro cases at twenty-nine thirty-eight, for a total of four thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars fifty-eight cents. Approve the state contract bid from Microsoft for one hundred and forty-one Surface Pro seven at six hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-six, ninety-nine cents each, for a total of ninety-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars fifty-nine cents. One hundred and forty-one Surface type cover at ninety-seven forty-nine each, for a total of thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and nine cents. And approve the following bid for one thousand one hundred and eight unit devices from CDW at two hundred and eight dollars each total, each for a total of two thirty-four sixty-four. Number eight, approve the following bid from Chrome Pilot for one thousand one hundred and eight cases at twelve ninety-nine each, for a total of fourteen thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Approve the following bid from the state contract for seventy teacher S P S at six ninety-six ninety-nine each, for a total of forty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents. Seventy teacher S P seven type covers at ninety-seven forty-nine each, for a total of six thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty cents. And seventy Surface pens at sixty-nine ninety-nine each, for a total of four thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, I need a, uh, motion to approve this.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
I need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, do we need to do a roll call because the money we're spending?
Yes.
Yes, okay, please do a roll call for us.
William Axton?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Howard Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Stahl?
Yes.
Norman Hicks?
Yes.
Diane Sadler?
Yes.
Mike Gilpatrick?
Yes.
Reekey Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Selver?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. The next item is the consent items on the second page. Dr. Winham, will you read these two, please?
Yes, sir. Approval of general purpose budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Approval of food service budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Approval of one forty-two federal projects budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Approval of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, Carl Perkins Basic Revision Number Five. Approval of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, I D E A Part B Revision Number Four. Approval of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, Title One A Revision Number Four. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Consolidated Administrative Administration Original Budget. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Title One A Original Budget. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Title Two A Original Budget. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Title Four Original Budget. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Title Five Original Budget. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one I D E A Part B Original Budget. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one I D E A Pre-School Original Budget. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Carl Perkins Original Budget. Approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one I D E A Partnership for Systemic Change. Letter of resignation from April Daniels, Jamie Burns, Regina Monday, Catherine Schere, and Tanya Baloo. And request for leave of absence from Amber Upchurch Stedham, eight-two, twenty twenty through one-four of twenty twenty-one. And a request for leave of absence from Katie Loftus, eight-seven, twenty twenty through twelve, eighteen, twenty twenty. And the update from Johnson Controls, we're going to move to the next, next month's agenda.
Okay, I need a, uh, motion to approve this.
I will go.
I'll second.
Second, okay. We don't need to do a roll call because there's no, uh-
Discussion, Coach, ask for the-
That's right. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes? New business? Approved first reading of the following policies. Four point two oh five in enrollment of college level courses. Six point three one nine alternative education. Six point three oh nine zero tolerance offenses. Six point three one nine suspension. Six three point one seven student de lis, de, lisper hearing authority. Six point four oh nine reporting child abuse. I need a motion to, to, uh, approve this.
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Sadler. Need a second?
Second, Coach.
Mike Gilpatrick, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, I'd like to recognize, recognize the O C E A. If anyone there to, uh, accept it.
I don't believe there is, Coach.
Directors of the Court, uh, Dr. Winham, would you, uh, read that, please?
I will. Uh, hired David Sadler for junior high cross-country coach. May eighth, twenty twenty, he was recommended by myself. Hired Karen Towers, Livingston Middle School girls basketball coach, recommended, again by myself. Hired, uh, the following non-tenured teachers is recommended by Brandon Cross, Principal at H, Roberts, Katie Bilbury, Kara Brown, Lisa Foal, Krista Garrett, Michael Hooper, Laura Pratt. Hired the following non-tenured teaching, teachers is recommended by Dale Flat, Principal at Allen's, Julian Moffett, Brittany McLaren, Hannah Lacy, Josh Danner, Tammy Hyder. Hired the following non-tenured teachers is recommended by Kim Dillon, Principal at Hillham. Zach Alley, Regina Radenzick, Tanya Story, and Courtney Todd. Hired the following non-tenured teachers is recommended by Richard Mountain, Principal at Livingston Academy. Natasha Taylor Collins, Jonathan Enix, Molly Gore, Allison Hall, Abby Jolly, Megan Kessel, Dee Smith, Lauren Wood, Caitlin Woods, Jeremy McLaren, Nate Ketter, Alicia Ritter, Michelle Billings, Stephen Henson, Lauren Hoffman, Carla Cracher. Hired the following non-tenured teachers is recommended by Doug Smith, Principal at Livingston Mill. Megan Hoggle, Rebecca Gore, Michael Brown, Michael Holbrook, Brittany Rucker, Carol Sample, Kelly Smith, and Sarah Sol. Hired the following non-tenured teachers is recommended by Donnie Holman, Principal Rick, Kelly Beasley, Lisa Gabbard, Allison Lacy, Prashina Mullins, Rachel Ramsey, Kelly Whale. Hired the following non-tenured teachers is recommended by Asher Fisher, Principal at Wilson. Sarah Jones, Chastie Key, and Wendy Haney.
Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
Hey, before, before you make that motion, since our board attorney is here, I've still got a couple of questions, and it might be more of a attorney board meeting somewhere else, uh, because of the personnel issue, but can we, we can do it after we adjourn, but can I, we have Mr. Cagle to meet and answer a couple of questions that I've got?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, we can go ahead and adjourn, we can do it afterwards.
Okay, uh, I need a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Second, uh, meeting adjourned, let's run into our, uh, work session, and, uh, I think that probably, I'd like to hear that what, what the building committee, uh, talked about tonight, today.
Yeah, so we discussed, uh, there was three different options on the table for the, uh, football field. Uh, one option was to do a football field behind the softball field with no track, so we threw that option out, so that narrowed it down to two options, which, one option would be a new football field with the track, soccer field, tracking field, all behind the softball field, uh, which would require a purchase of nine and a half acres of land to do that. The other option would be to put a track in at the current football field, which the football field would have to be turned diagonally, um, and it would be a complete turn of the football field, and that would be a purchase of three acres to do that. So what we're going to do is we're going to hold three committee meetings. Uh, the dates will be determined, one will be at L.A., one will probably be at Richmond or Allen's, the other one will be at Hillham or Wilson, um, and we'll publish those in the paper by next Tuesday. On those dates, that will give, uh, community a time to come out, look at the options, uh, provide any feedback that we got. Then after that, we're going to set a meeting up with the county commission and present the two options to them, uh, to look at the, the options of that, so that's where we stand. I don't think I left anything out.
Can you ask questions?
Yeah, any, community can ask questions and provide feedback or anything, so.
Thank you. Is, is there anything else we need to discuss?
Coach, I had a quick question, uh, and this is for the director. Mark, you know, is, is there a, uh, I don't want to say a magic number, but is there an ideal percentage of cases that would opt us into not opening on time? Or do you have any info on that?
As far as I know, there is no number like that that exists.
Just, just when we feel as a board and with the health officials that it's the best idea?
Yes.
And I know back in March, April timeframe when this came up, uh, I think T S B A sent us some recommendations of policy suspensions that we had to put in place because of some different things we were doing. So we may want to look at any policies that would be in conflict with doing any kind of online learning or things like that, maybe look at a suspension until this all things over. So that way we're in compliance of that.
Yeah, I've got one question about the buses. Are we legal? Are we going to take their temperature when they get on the bus? Is that legal for the bus driver to do that?
Bus drivers cannot.
Okay.
And I don't know that it's legal for anyone to do that on the bus. We're trying to check into that, um, I can't remember, Dotson, who the guy is, it's over that in the state. We've got to call into him, we've not received an answer back yet.
Was it Darrell Winham?
No, it's another guy, not a national. They, we called Darrell and he suggested not do it.
Okay, that's why I didn't know if it's legal or not.
Yeah. I, I have a question for Dr. Winham. Have, have you, uh, checked in the possibility of delaying start, uh, in hopes that some, this will, get fewer cases and give us a little bit more time before we start whatever we do?
Well, that's something we can always consider, I mean, that's, uh, an option that we always have. We would have to adjust our calendar, of course, but yep, that's always an option that we can consider.
Anyone else?
Dr. Winham, I got a question. Based on your statement with, uh, Mark Lee, you said he is terminated.
I did not say that.
So he's still a teacher in the school system?
Yes, the statement that we read, yes.
So he is still going to be exposed to students?
He will be a teacher in the school system as of right now.
Okay, so at any point during this, has anybody with impartial bias ever looked into this case?
The district attorney looked into this case.
School board. District attorney said it's on the school board now. So no one, has anybody looked at the sworn statements from these girls?
I don't know that we have looked right at that.
Brett Knight offered it. Thing is, is I've got a little girl on them school. She's not going to be the next guinea pig. She's not going to be the next student for some predator to prey on her.
Is this not the attorney? Are you the attorney?
I mean, you got the attorney right there that could answer these questions.
And they're legally looking.
You got a source of knowledge.
Yes, we do, and that's what our meeting will be behind closed doors. We don't have that meeting in the public.
But you're still allowing him to be a, a predator towards these girls. To sexually harass and sexually be provocative, to touch inappropriately these girls.
He touched my little girl.
I mean, you are allowing this to happen, you are complicit in this. Also biased as well.
Well, I, I think when the D A checked in on this, is, is the legal opinion, uh, for where we're at.
A little help, please.
Yes, hold on just a second, please. Uh, I, I think that the board sympathizes with whatever went on, but the D A did not find anything hot to, that could be prosecuted.
There's a difference between criminal charges and moral efficacy of a licensed professional as a student, as a teacher for students. Totally different playing fields, you're comparing candy to, to grass.
I agree with you.
No, you don't, you're just sitting there telling me it's the total opposite. What I'm telling you is, is you're allowing him to still be a teacher, still allowing the possibility of him doing this to another student.
The state, Tennessee, the state of Tennessee did not revoke his license.
Yet.
Okay, now that was part of the investigation. And what we have to do is when we have something like that, we send it through the, uh, the D A, and it goes, if it's, if they think it needs to be sent to the state about his license, okay, if you do something to someone without a legal grounds, you know, we, we can be sued.
Well, would you rather have these students' parents sue you? I mean, they're not, would you rather have these parents sue you?
Nobody, nobody did.
Then why don't you do the right thing by getting rid, rid of a sexual predator?
We did what we're, uh, what, what we are supposed to do when we have knowledge of something.
There's a difference between moral etiquette and moral responsibility as a human being and as a teacher and as a retired teacher to protect your students, your family members, part of this community. These girls are totally getting taken advantage of by a predator who constantly, for twenty years, since he started as a new teacher when I was in high school, he was still acting that way. There's other people that have been in the same situation, but they left in the county and now they're back.
Can we recess and meet with Mr. Cagle, because I've got a couple of questions?
May, well, may I speak?
Can I address, please, please?
Okay, guys, uh, I will end the work.
My daughter made the claims, actually not my daughter. Another teacher in the school brought the claims in twenty seventeen. That was my little girl. And I'm still waiting for an answer as to what the board found out in that investigation three years later. Still waiting.
If I may speak on that.
I, I, I mean, I welcome anybody to, to respond to in twenty seventeen, three years.
No, it's fine, I mean, you're bored. Protect our students, protect our children.
The only person in this system that ever asked for a statement was Richard Milton this year in twenty twenty. This lord was given the statement in twenty seventeen.
I've never seen a statement.
And as a person that's been through this, this is your job to keep us safe, and you're not doing it.
So what's keeping you from asking for any statements? I mean...
I've never seen a statement.
Just because you don't know the...
We don't even know who you are, you didn't introduce yourself.
My name is Michael Kennard.
Michael Kennard.
Just because you don't know the law is forty-five and you're doing seventy-five, doesn't get you out of a ticket, ignorance is not an excuse.
I knew, I knew nothing about these recent events until, I don't even get on Facebook, but my daughter showed me a video and that's when I text Dr. Winham last week and ask about it, so that's the first I heard of it. Normally, an issue that's brought up with a teacher, normally, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, then it's addressed by the director of schools, unless there's agreements filed that's brought in front of the board, then we see no statements or anything about that.
But according to the state law, the board has the ability to hire and fire teachers.
No, the board does not have the ability to hire and fire.
Brett, is that right?
That they, he's correct now, the, the board hires and fires the director.
But then they don't have any...
Not directly, they set the policy, they set the tone, they set the standard. They call for investigations, they call for hearings, they hire and they fire a director if he is not following their direction or their behavior.
I think it, I think it comes down to Jake Crabtree, I think it comes down to, the allegations have been made, all, you know, in respect to Mr. Miller, you know, we, we guys put you in, in office, we respect you, we put you in these positions. I feel like, and I'll, I'll keep it quick, but I feel like what you're saying is, everybody agrees what took place, if it took place, and I'm not doubting her at all, I'm saying, you know, there's talk about proof, no proof, I'm saying it's inappropriate. So it comes down to the school board saying, well, the state says this, the law says this, and I'm with Mike, what about efficacy? Whether, either you believe the girls or you don't. Now, if you don't, stand your ground, tell us that's where you stand and, and make your point, and, 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 and keep him, uh, employed. If you believe these girls, then do something. And by, by doing nothing, you're telling us that you don't believe them, they're all lying, they're making it up.
And where I stand now is, like I said, the first I heard about it was last week when I showed the video, and from the legality aspect, I'd like the board to meet with our lawyer, 'cause I have some questions, I mean, that's, that's where I stand.
Will we carry instead of making claims to be addressed after the board finishes their investigation?
Uh, from our attorney, certainly no legal plan or back and forth between the two boards, no.
There'll be no findings as to, I mean, everything that's going on here, it fits the best of the rules.
We, we, if you wanna speak to me, I'll speak to you, that's what you're asking, yes. And by knowledge, anyone here would, if that's what you're asking. But as a board, no, we won't discuss this out loud in our meeting as a chairman, so we can't.
I'm asking if, if, when the board completes their investigation, which I've been told is ongoing, does the board announce it? Do we need one that's made the claim?
That's the legality.
Like I said, I mean, I've been twenty seventeen, I'm waiting three years. I had to pull my daughter out of the school system. And I agree to that kind of a thing.
You know, I think that probably what where we're at odds is the board doesn't have the authority to investigate if someone...
They most certainly do, they most certainly do, they most certainly do. And if you're saying that you don't want to exercise your authority to call for a hearing or investigation, then you're derailing your duty.
Okay, well, wait, hold on just a second, Brett, okay?
I don't mind if you say in your opinion, but if you start saying that it's law, you're incorrect.
Hey, okay, hold on just a second. I think the board can ask for the director and notify the authorities that do that. I don't think the board has the authority to go out here and investigate, okay? If they are made aware of what something wrong has been done, they have an obligation to report it to the correct police, the director, and let him, but the board doesn't have the authority or the, to investigate.
Well, then I'll ask you the question directly, I, I have a recorded conversation, we've already said this, but I'd like you to say it in public. So your position is that this board is impotent to protect these girls in this matter?
Nope, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, the way you're saying it, we're impotent to protect.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cagle has something to say.
Mr. Chairman, I'm instructing you not to answer that question, it's inflammatory and Mr. Knight knows it is.
Absolutely it is, it's inflammatory to the community of Overton County that our elected officials would rather have a Nashville attorney hired by a director that you hired to tell us what's appropriate in an Overton County school when we elected you to be our hearts and our minds of what is acceptable in our community, not this attorney from Nashville, not a director that you hired, you, ladies and gentlemen. That is inflammatory, it's inflammatory to our character and to our heart as a community, it sure is.
Are you finished?
No.
Well, we are finished, we are going to meet with our attorney in the back.
Are you saying that you're done hearing from the community of Overton County?
No, sir, I'm saying, I'm saying, we are trying to conduct a meeting with our attorney.
You concluded your meeting.
I, I am speaking.
You concluded your meeting.
No, you interrupted by asking if you're done. To wait, and if you don't wanna do that, we're gonna politely ask you to remove yourself.
Actually, I was speaking when you interrupted me.
You asked him if he was done, you interrupted him.
He said yes.
He said no.
He said no.
Question, is this the community down, does anybody else wanna say anything? Anybody else wanna say something?
I just wanna remind everybody, we put them in power, we done this. So find out, uh, which one, Dotson or Miller, which one is not running this, for, for this election, 'cause there's only one gall on the board, you're not running on yet. Okay. Find out when your representative in your district is running. We vote some, you vote different people in, you change the system, you wanna change, vote change.
That little girl, that little girl, I give you your word, you know my, Mr. Cagle. I don't care what you're coming with, I don't care what your opinion is, I want you to understand that, me as a citizen has an opinion.
Understood, we are having a meeting, I understood, if you'd like to discuss this, we will discuss this, as soon as this is over.
You're not allowed to discuss...
You do realize the meeting's about our children.
You're not allowed to discuss it outside of a meeting.
I can discuss with him, his position.
You can't discuss your policy or your position.
Wrap this up, Coach, please.
We're not getting any work and, uh, I end this work session. Everybody's free to go, thank you.